An additional legal with the sheriff to ask for through ERNR or both through that way. Because the budget was closed, the 2016 budget was closed without these two expenditure items in it, it requires a budget emergency to add them. So that $26,000 for state patrol and by the way, that $5,000 is the money that goes to, from the sheriff to the state patrol to provide traffic on the traffic control for the Latinr Festival is what that is actually for. And then the $21,000 was the vehicle. And so that is under sheriff's operations. The second under sheriff's is in Offscan therefore and is not a general fund item, is a total of $24,600 which was necessary to go towards the condiment.com contract that comes through Offscan that the sheriff is on a, for providing services to the Offscan network. Both were necessary, both were in the sheriff's budget, both were approved by the commissioners at the departmental budget level. Like I say, in the final budget we got changed, they got left out. So it does take a budget emergency to approve those two things.
Any questions? So there's no objection, we'll open the public hearing. Nobody's signed to testify. Is anybody wishing to make public comment on these two budget emergency items at the sheriff's office? I see no one. Let's see the board's wishes. Prove to close the hearing?
Second.
Prove the second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. Motion seconded. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next public hearing is a proposed ordinance of any county code 5.06, additional sales or use tax to restore the 0.5% tax rate from the current 23. It's on the way to be administered one more time?
Okay, thank you. As the commissioners remember when we had this on the work session, the, last year the county did decrease the optional sales tax rate by 2 tenths of a percent starting in July. However, one correction for the gentleman who talked about the six month number, there's a two month lag. So while the, in the data, it really only started in September, so we can only talk about the last four months being a reduction. Because while the tax reduction started in July, that doesn't show up until September as you're aware. So the four months, we did have a little over 300 and unfortunately, I thought I had that packet here exactly, but presented during the old hearing. It was, it was more than $300,000, 370 some thousand as I recall, in a reduction that occurred during those four months, a little over $5,000 a month on the average. It is projected that it would be somewhere between 950 and a million dollars a year for a 2 tenth reduction based on a $5 million estimate. There's the 20% of a year's worth of sales tax question. And last year was the, he's absolutely right, 2015, had there not been a 2 tenth reduction in those last four months, would have been the highest in the history of, I don't know. The concern the commissioners had and asked me to bring back at the first of the year was that when these decisions were made to do the tax change and the tax holiday and the budget was made using the best information we got from the state and from all the sources that we all consider in looking at the forward of the economy, the third quarter. The results of the fourth quarter data that didn't come out until right after the first of the year were projecting significant difference in the upcoming year, in the upcoming years' worth of revenue. And Stan Greasy and I, the chief accountant in the auditor's office independently and both came to the same conclusion that with the change expected in the projection that in all likelihood we would have had greater than a 10% reduction or change in a budgeted revenue item, i.e. sales tax revenue. We budgeted 4.6 million. Both of us figured that we're probably close to half a million dollars again, less than that based on the current projection and therefore requires that information to be brought to me to bring to you. Anytime there's a 10% reduction anticipated in any revenue item, we're supposed to bring to the commissioners and in a public meeting and make that information known to them. So one of the ways to fix that 10% reduction or not, I mean, one would be just allow it and use a little bit more in reserves. Another would be to correct it by any of a number of means, one of which the majority of the board chose to enter into the process of restoring the tax cut that had been made starting in July. Commissioners asked me to make that. They passed a resolution and asked me to send a copy of the resolution to the Department of Revenue saying it would be their intention to make a 75 day deadline, their intention to reduce or to increase that tax to restore the 2 tenths cut, previous cut effective April 1st. And that because our charter requires us to do by after a public hearing, a formal code change, we would inform them if the decision was different than that after the public hearing. So that's where we are. We've submitted, Department of Revenue has accepted it. They did say that if the, because of their timeline, that if the commissioners should change their mind after the public hearing and do a code change that did not reduce it on April 1st, that they would maintain April and the first time you could, you would have to, April would increase and that if you wanted to change it, the decrease would have to start July 1 again. So that's my report.
Any questions for the administrator? If not, we'll open the public hearing. If there's no objection, we have five individuals signed up to speak. First is Kenneth Riondo.
Kenneth Riondo, same address. Spoke against the reduction last year just for this reason that we're in now, where you have a big hole in the budget. You made a lot of spending decisions also last year. And of course of this, there's a big imbalance. That's why I support increase in the tax. I think your staff for the most part is supporting an increase in the tax, but the resource in the stability here, you got long-term taxation at a certain rate and then you made a change. Yes, there was a philosophical change in the board during the last year at large, change in direction of many decisions. I haven't heard any complaints to speak up about imposition or the reduction that, you know, created, created, you know, a big change in their budgets. You know, it doesn't seem to, in a situation where it helped people very much, I don't really hear much of that. So I'm thinking that this increase is not going to create a big problem for people either. But that's where I'm at. I think we need to get back to stability here.
Philip Kjol. Good morning, Philip Kjol, 60, Dr. Cruzain. I have a letter that was adopted and passed by Port Angeles Business Association this morning, signed by our president, John Brewer. I serve as vice president for that organization. The letter is as follows. Dear County Commissioners, we are a business organization of approximately 17 members with the purpose of promoting business in the greater Port Angeles area and increasing business growth and developing jobs. We applauded the move the Board of Commissioners moved last April to lower the county's sales tax by 0.2%. The sales tax is a regressive tax that falls most heavily on the least strong economically. A lower sales tax provides a competitive advantage to our businesses over higher sales tax jurisdictions and decreases their disadvantages compared to internet sellers that autumn do not charge any sales tax. This is particularly noticeable regarding large ticket items such as automobiles, boats and construction. We believe that it is premature to increase the sales tax now after a trial period of only nine months. Reserves of the county are still healthy and the economic condition of the county has not suffered a drastic deterioration over the last nine months nor has such a deterioration immediately foreseeable. There has not been enough time to measure the impact of the lowering of the sales tax on businesses and jobs in the county. Such an assessment should be undertaken before imposing a tax increase. Finally, a sales tax increase just before taxpayers vote on the proposed SQUIM school bond, and I would add the Crescent School District levies, that you have endorsed and that already failed twice cannot abate passage of the bond levy less likely, as voters affected by both taxes weigh their combined tax burden. For all these reasons, we believe that now is the wrong time for a sales tax increase and respectfully request that you not act now but reconsider at a later date. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, John Brewer, Port Angeles Business Association. I would offer my personal comments on this is that the particular issues that I have concerns about are those SQUIM levies and that SQUIM school bond. There is significant opposition out there to that SQUIM school bond and this I believe is the third, if not the fourth time, third time to the touch run. Passing an increase in your sales tax revenues is not going to help that pass, nor will it help those bonds and levies that are out in the Crescent School District. Fundamentally, the issue for an increase, a tax increase, is warranted if your unreserved fund balance has dropped below what the board has set as a policy number. I am not aware that that is the case in assistance. I think that the reserves that the county have right now is very adequate. There may well be a point in the near future when that has to be looked at and I have great confidence in this board and their ability to undertake that discussion at a later date if necessary. I am also somewhat concerned that there has been a finance committee appointed to review the county's finances and one of those things I would hope would be your unreserved fund balance number, the percentage that you want to come up with. It's my understanding that that committee report's not due for a period of months yet and as such, I think your decision as being considered today is premature. I thank you for your consideration.
James Preston. Hi, yes, James Preston, 332 South Maple Street in Port Angeles. Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. And Mr. Jones, thank you for pointing out that the information on the treasurer's website incorrectly states the revenues that are collected during what appear to be calendar years because of that lag. However, as a resident of the county, I would hope that information would get back to the treasurer's staff and ask them to correct this particular charge because it does confuse the county residents. I may be licensed to practice law in California, which is mostly from Washington by an MBA and that's good everywhere. I really can do math. I'm not an attorney who's math challenged. And treasure chaplain, I want to thank you for your candor. When I was here two weeks ago, you acknowledged, I brought in a number of articles from the Peninsula Daily News showing how you avidly supported the sales tax reduction and you acknowledged that those articles were correct. I do respect your candor on that. As a voter, I appreciate that. I really like elected officials who were honest about their house voting practices. I would like to point out one thing that I didn't mention when I was here two weeks ago, and this is from the Peninsula Daily News, April 14th, 2015. And this article says that McIntyre initially proposed a six-month, 0.02% sales tax holiday from July 1st to December 31st that would save taxpayers about $360,000. Chapman argued it would be difficult to raise the sales tax back to the 0.4 figure in six months, it's just not worth it to turn around and raise the taxes. McIntyre each agreed to keep the sales tax holiday until further notice. I will take up the time to pick here, there are a number of PDM articles in which you did support basically a permanent reduction in the sales tax. You were the leading party on it. The other commissioners watered a six-month reduction and you wisely recommended a long-term reduction, which I again applaud you for. When I was here last time, I mentioned that the chief accountant, Stan Greasy, I forget how his name is pronounced, had been quoted in the PDM on April 15th, 2015, saying that the general fund with the actions you were taking on the 15th, and it wasn't just the sales tax, but other items that were under consideration, would reduce the fund balance to perhaps 9.5 million dollars by the end of the year. But the reserve fund now is well over the 9.5 million dollars, it's close to 12 million dollars. Actually, according to the numbers I have here, it's supposed to be 11,272. I'm sorry, no, that was the budgeted reserves. The actual reserves are 12,187. So Mr. Greasy's numbers were not correct. However, he's a CPA and I wanted to point out that that's what CPAs do. They give conservative numbers when they do financial forecasts. They'll be a little conservative on the revenues that are supposed to come in and they'll be a little, shall we say, large on the expenses. So your ending surplus, your ending projected numbers are a conservative number that you should be able to get without causing undue considerations. There aren't surprises. That's just what CPAs do. So to the extent that you're relying on his projections of a surplus to cast your vote today, I please implore you, understand all of the thought that went into his projections, the conservative nature of them. Also take a look at the history of the budgeted reserves versus actual. And again, if my math is correct, going back to 2010, in every single year, the budgeted reserves for the end of 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15 budgeted reserves were lower than the actual reserves. And that's what county government does. You plan on the worst possible case. For instance, spending, spending last year was budgeted at $33 million. The actual spending was 32 million. So again, I implore you, don't move fast on this. There's no urgency out there to move fast and I respectfully request that you listen to the financial commission and if you still have questions, as I said last time, clear it up to a vote of the residents. Have faith in us to understand what should be done for the county. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Hi, Walter. Looks like I jumped the gun when I gave my comments at 10:28, so I request that those comments which I gave to Trish be entered into the record as my comments for the public hearing. I'd just like to add two things. One is just anecdotally from my own experience, the last car I purchased, I bought here in Towne County, even though the best pre-sales tax price was in Seattle, and that was solely due to the fact that the sales tax here was lower than it is in Seattle. A couple of hundred dollars or even less can sometimes make a difference. The second point is, it is in the nature of politics that you will have rows of people coming out when they're complaining about something. You have very few people taking the time out of their busy schedule to come out to thank you for something done right. I would ask you do not mistake the fact that you didn't have large numbers of people showing up thanking you, as I believe you deserved, for the sales tax relief last year, that people don't appreciate the help in their budgets. And I think again, this is worth further study rather than just reversing it as we have now earned after only seeing four months of results. Thank you very much.
Donnie Hall.
Hi, I'm Donnie Hall at 151 McIlwatt Trail in SQUIM. I want to set the record straight. In reading PDM, I've noticed that they repeatedly use the term tax holiday in place of the tax cut. I would point out that the press often sacrifices accuracy in the interest of revenue and this is one case. We're talking about two different things. And as Mr. Preston indicated, back in April, Mr. McIntyre offered up a tax holiday, a six-month tax reduction with a definite sunset clause in it and it would have terminated in December. But Mr. Chapman said, and was quoted in the PDM in April, in response to Mr. McIntyre, "The sales tax holiday is kind of a gimmick. If you want to do the right thing, just cut it and be done with it." And a little later in April, Mr. Chapman said, "A tax cut of some measure couldn't hurt either," again responding to Mr. McIntyre. And again, he was quoted later in the article, "A small tax cut might spur economic growth." Now around that time, I remember a conversation I had with Mr. Chapman in which he described himself as, "His thinking is now really Keynesian." And he voiced an opinion that it would make sense to spend down the reserves down to their statutory requirement of 9.5 million or so and that this money didn't do any good sitting in the bank. And per Mr. Greasy's estimate, he felt that he would be successful in that particular reduction of 3 million. Unfortunately, Mr. Chapman, you failed. The estimate held up and the actuals really negated the conservative estimate of Mr. Greasy. And Mr. Greasy is back with the same estimate. And now that we have the opportunity, you have the opportunity of raising the taxes, now we're not talking about that money sitting in the bank. At the time, you were free and felt confident in challenging Mr. McIntyre and convincing the board, including Mr. McIntyre, to go along with you. That's something that seems to be lost on most of your supporters. I quoting one from the comment pages of the online PDM. I'm reading exactly the quote. "As to Chapman, I see 13 years of sensible decision with a brief and horrifying two-year interval of being another spineless McIntyre acolyte." And this is a supporter. This isn't the only comment to that effect. But you charted your own course at that time and I believe strongly that it was the correct course. And I think we have seen some results in the economy as a result of your particular action. I think it's still the right course. Generally, I would not describe myself a Keynesian, but we're not talking about going into debt. We're talking about spending down the surplus so the money doesn't stay within the bank. And finally, I would ask that repealing the tax cut as opposed to the holiday would resolve a 1 million line in the approximately 3 million deficit that Mr. Greasy projects? Why are we only talking to 0.2%? Why don't we go for a tax increase of 0.6% if we follow through on that logic? So given that, I am, and I do want to point out that 481, PDM, on April 30th, was quoting, was stating headlines to the effect of, "Call the county to become first in the state to lower sales tax rate." And on April 15th, again, they were back talking about a tax cut. And most recently, in the past two months, every headline's been tax holiday. And so I do want to record for the record that we, that change in semantics that seems to be taking place in the print media. And I thank you very much.
That's the end of our, is there anybody else who wishes to make comment on this issue?
A question for the?
Trish.
Did Commissioner, I mean, did Administrator Jones mention that it's moved, that it's already in play, that you'll have, you'll get at least two months or April, May and June of increase and back down if you, if you, this is already given notice? Is that a correct interpretation? Or you said earlier, that the increase is going to happen regardless?
Department of Revenue, when they issued the approval. Yes, that will happen if they, if more changes is made today, the mind change won't take place until July 1. That's correct.
Just wanted to, I didn't.
Norma Turner at Port Angeles Road. I want to talk about hopefully helping us as a community and as a nation to move back to more discussion about the common good versus what's in it for me. And I believe that this attempt, this request for changes back to 0.5 is basically, should be framed in what's the common good. There's a lot of rhetoric about how much money people can save. In reality, we're talking about 20 cents per hundred dollars spent versus the county having a million dollars that they actually could use for supportive programs. I volunteer in an agency that works with low income people. Frankly, they don't have much disposable income. The few hundred dollars they have each month to spend, we're talking about, they maybe save one or two dollars a month by having this tax reduction. But within those who want to buy cars and want to buy yachts and all of those things, yes, maybe they would save some money. But frankly, if you have enough money to buy a yacht or a car, you probably can afford the extra $2 per thousand spent. So the fact that, so what I'd like to look at is what's happened in the past as an example? When you adopt the 1 tenth, the 1 percent, commonly known as the Hargrove Fund, which was designated for chemical dependency and mental health programs? That's only half of what you're talking about today and what has the community gained from that minimal tax? Number one, we were able to reestablish a crisis center at Peninsular Behavioral Health. That was a request for the community for 30 years and it finally happened because of that fund. The sheriff's office for years has asked for some intervention so that people come in the jails, they can have some help with their drug problems, they can have some problems when they get out. What they see is when someone leaves the jail, the person who greets them is their drug dealer. So what they wanted was a program where when people left the jail, they had somewhere to go, someone else to meet them. That has been funded through the CD mental health program. For the first time, my husband's a pediatrician and he came here in 1970. He was absolutely ecstatic when these dollars finally brought a nurse practitioner specialist in pediatric mental health issues. In the 30 years he practiced, he had nowhere to send his kids that had mental health issues. There's access to CD mental health programs, people can't afford them. So what we've seen is that 1 tenth, 1 percent indeed has given the community tremendous help. So I believe that people that I work with in these low income programs with very little disposal income, when I talk to them, what they're looking for is some kind of help. And to save a dollar or two a month, the help is more important to them. And I guess I'm just a little bit chagrin that people can talk about how important it is to increase cars. it is to increase car sales. If you look at how much money, that was, I think, was a false premise, that we'd increase car sales. If you look at how much money someone would save, it hardly pays for the cost. The impression was, they'd come from Seattle, buy cars here because of the lower rate. I'm sorry, but if you pencil it out, gas, ferry, time, it doesn't pencil out that someone's coming here to buy a car because you lowered it by 0.2%. So I would encourage you to reestablish it, and at the same time, establish a mechanism for community input as to if that is going to pull together a million dollars a year that you have community discussion about what is the best way to benefit the committee for the million. Because I'll tell you, it will benefit them more than trying to save someone in low-income a dollar a month. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to make comment?
Okay. Question.
You people know me. I understand Creasy, the audity who happened, 7/15, I've been all over in Port Angeles. I'm here mostly to comment to people who don't know me. I understand Creasy, whose name has been used rather freely in the last few minutes. I would like to point out that the difference between the 2015 results, which in the general fund is approximately a half-million-dollar excess of expenditure over revenue, which leaves the general fund's fund balance at about twelve million as of the end of the year, the difference between that and the three million I was projecting in my April discussions, the largest part of that difference is things that the commissioners had been talking about, but in fact did not do. It was not a question of me being excessively conservative. It was mostly a question of the commissioners kicking around ideas that they in fact wound up not doing. And so I'm just sitting for the record. It is not because I'm a CPA. It's because I was addressing a suggestion on the board that in fact did not happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to make comment?
Megan Robb, 34201. It's kind of a moot point, what I had to say, since this is going to be implemented, whether the general public had input or not. I was most disappointed. What I had was, I asked the board commissioners to postpone the proposed resolution notifying the Department of Revenue of their intent to restore the county's optional sales tax rate at 0.5% effective April 1st. Seven months is not given. This resolution time enough to prove the effect on the economy. In March, the Finance Committee will meet, and this is an opportunity to leverage their resources. On April 22nd, the exceptional memo submitted by the county commissioners, the author Stan Creasy, it's not an insult stand, members of the county auditor's team distressed enough about the county's financial future to publicly be heard. If there's a concern about the directions our county fiscal policy, why did you vote for this resolution? If the assumptions are accurate and nothing significant, but like changes for 2016, why repel the resolution? Norma was talking about people buying cars in our county because we reduced this tax. I heard on the radio that you bought a Subaru. And Mr. Chapman, you bought a Jeep. So it must have some kind of impact on your financial stability if you guys can buy vehicles. I realize that what you said is, David told you, you saved $68, but you both still bought cars in this county and you used that tax. So it must have some kind of effect on you and your economy.
Anybody else who wishes to make comment? Is there anybody who hasn't commented first before we start round two? Who wants to? Mr. Rice.
Hi, my name's Matthew Ray Martin. I'm here for Lakeport Angeles. I was not prepared to say anything. I wasn't going to say anything, but I came here in my office just to be able to tape this for you. But having listened to everything, I'm a simple man, okay? Numbers that large, they mean nothing to me. They don't, it's hard for me to grasp a million dollars, ten million dollars, nine million dollars. But what I can grasp is this: Last year, this council decided to cut the tax. Last year, it was a good decision. One man on this council has flip-flopped since that time. Mr. Rose Ice, who campaigned saying that you would probably raise the tax. So that's not unexpected. What was unexpected was that one person, for whatever reason, would flip-flop and go from saying that a tax cut is a good thing to saying a tax raise is a good thing. I don't make a lot of money, okay? I've been, I make more money than I used to. I grew up poor. One or two dollars more a month made a difference in my household, okay? One or two dollars a week made a difference in my household when I was a kid, okay? All I want to say is, it seems awfully strange to me that people are in such a hurry to take more money out of my pocket. With this political future coming up, this election year, the wrong people win, then they'll take even more taxes out of our money. Ernest Sanders, I know, okay? It's just a natural thing. If he gets elected, I fear that we're gonna have a 90% tax rate, okay? That's realistic fears of everybody in this community, okay? So for you to raise the tax, the sales tax, and take more money, no matter how big or how small it is, makes a difference in everybody's pocket. I'm not gonna buy a car this year. But if I were, and I'm managing my money, $68 savings would be well worth it to me. I would walk across the street to save that $68, okay? And I have a lot more. I wanted to say, I was standing over there, and I'm forgetting it right now. But bear in mind, okay, they've already introduced a bill to start an income tax here in Washington State. If that gets passed, that's even more money out of everybody's pocket. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who wishes to make comment in the first time before we start round two? Okay. Anybody else who should make comment again?
James Preston, freezer number two, South Maple Street, Port Angeles. Thank you for being calling me. I'll keep this brief. Mr. Creasy, thank you very much for coming. I was not trying to cast any dispersions on you, but I have worked with CPAs for a long time.
Yeah, I'm a senior attorney.
That's true. We've exchanged jokes about that afterwards. Anyway, my point here is that I thought there was something else going on when he came up with the nine-and-a-half-million-dollar estimate on the reserves, and he explained it very, very well. But still, if my numbers are right, your budgeted reserves versus actual reserves, the actual reserves consistently are higher than your budgeted reserves, not by multi-millions of dollars, but they are, I'm sorry, the actual reserves are higher than the budget, which is what it should be. You're doing your job as a CPA, and you've got a good man there, and I applaud the county for having Mr. Creasy on payroll. I would like to say, though, that although I went to law school, I have MBA, I don't want to create the impression that I'm rich here. I never owned a yacht or anything like that. I just came from law school. But public service, I joined the CIA, and then I was a cop, and I did a whole bunch of things. I find myself now living on Social Security, a pension from the Air Force Reserve, and I'll get a small pension from a life insurance company in several years. So I'm not gonna buy a yacht. But now that I find myself on a fixed income, I agree with the last speaker, that money is important. And I have to take exception to what Ms. Turner said, because she was saying, well, gee, now that we're gonna get this million dollars back, we got public carry, so how are we gonna spend it? When I was here last time, two weeks ago, the discussion was, the dire economic condition of the county was such that you had to get rid of the tax cut to restore fiscal responsibility to the budget, that it was cratering your reserves, that it had to be used for the reserves. If the county is in dire economic conditions, if things have changed so much from last April, that there is a valid economic reason to remove that reduction, then put it in the reserves and don't have any hearings on how you're gonna spend more of our tax dollars. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who wishes to make comment?
Norma Turner, I just want to thank both of you for buying your cars locally, for being good citizens. We bought a car locally, and the sales tax reduction had absolutely no impact on our decision. We bought it because it was a local deal. We didn't look at going to Seattle or somewhere else. By the way, King County has a higher tax rate than we do. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to make comment? One more.
I move that...
Do we need to close the hearing first?
I don't want to. We can keep it open. We have a myriad of options.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second? Okay, second, if you close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. We should carry these. In all fairness, I think it'd be fair for the board to have time for dialogue before we move to motion, usually after lengthy public hearings, try to show the respect for those who have differing opinions. So I've found over the years that when a board moves right to a motion, it tends to elevate board member's blood pressure who don't feel like they're being heard. So at this point, I'd like to hear from board members what their thoughts are on what we heard today.
Well, first of all, thank you to everyone who's come to speak today. I appreciate, I appreciate hearing what you say. And it's no secret that I campaigned, and one of my, one of my, one of the items that I campaigned on was restoring the sales tax to its previous amount. So I don't think that my position here is a surprise to anyone. And while I have heard some opposition, and of course, in almost anything that we talk about, there will be opposition, I would just like to share with my fellow commissioners and with the audience that I heard zero opposition to this on the campaign trail. And in fact, I heard an overwhelming amount of support for restoring the sales tax for a wide variety of reasons. I have listened to your concerns today. Many of them relate to there not being enough time having passed to assess the impact. And I understand where you're coming from. However, since the original goal was a six-month holiday, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how much time would be sufficient to assess the impact in the way that you're thinking about. I personally am not concerned that this is going to have an effect on the school bond vote. There may be others who will equate sales taxes to property taxes and look at things through that lens. However, that's not a concern that I have. I appreciate the suggestion to raise the tax to try and accommodate the entire hole in the budget that we're looking to fix here. I realize, of course, that was made in jest, but I think that this board, and certainly speaking for myself, I am looking to try and take a more balanced approach that does not put an undue burden on any individual, and that also does not look to just increasing revenue or just cutting expenses as an alternative. The budget is, the county's budget is, it's very difficult to see how it will be sustainable over the long term. If we look a year, or two, or three, or five down the road, and look at the structural increases that are inherent in the county budget, it is very difficult for me and for most any other expert that I have spoken with to see how that budget is sustainable over the long term. And I've spent most of my time in my first few weeks as a commissioner going around and meeting department heads around the county and listening to what their workload is and trying to understand what they accomplish. And I wish that everybody in the county could have the opportunity that I've had the last few weeks, because what you would find is that every single department in this county is operating at an extremely high level. The work that is accomplished by people throughout this building is more complex, more broad, and more difficult than I think you can imagine. Now, I've been working to imagine it and working to learn about it for the last six or eight months and doing very little else, and it still has been very eye-opening to me. I think that we all should be extremely proud of the work that our county departments, our county employees are accomplishing. And when I hear from constituents, and I've heard from one, at least one a day, every single day since I started three weeks ago, people aren't looking for less service from the county. They're looking for more service. Mark, why don't we have more deputies to help address the drug problem? Mark, why don't we have more services to address other community needs? So I don't think that people are looking for less. I think people are hoping for more. And when we put the, put all those pieces together, the way that it falls for me is that restoring the sales tax to its previous rate is the right thing to do, and that's why I'll be voting the way that I will. Thank you.
I have quite a fair amount of experience in financial analysis, and if anything, tend to ask an awful lot of questions. There's some questions about an issue that we'll deal with later on today that I hope to get some answers to, but I'm critical when it comes to spending any of your money. This Sunday, there was a letter to the editor, and I just want people to reflect on what was said in that letter. The person that wrote it was 90, and they talked about what it meant to have additional expenses that they had to deal with because of tax. And then they shared that they had a fixed income. The reality is that we do need to be sensitive to part of our population that has a very serious problem in terms of dealing with a fixed income and increased taxes. To me, the way the county can increase the kind of services that we're talking about is through our economy increasing. I can tell you that $12 million in reserve is a number that many other counties, now I'm networking with an awful lot of other county commissioners, I can't think of one that has that kind of a reserve. So the issue that I share with you is the need for us to focus on supporting the people in our community where a dollar, or two dollars, or three dollars makes a significant difference. Let me also state that there is no three-million-dollar deficit. This is a balanced budget. It takes us to the $9 million that we are authorized to stake out. And that issue is our ability to manage money at that level. Philosophically, you know, the commissioner, the two commissioners want more security. That's what this issue's all about. They want the additional security. They want the additional security. I just ask you to think about the people that are on a fixed income and don't have any alternatives.
I'd like to make another comment first. And Commissioner Peach, I think you're right when you're talking about the... What we're looking for, or at least what I'm looking for, is a little bit more security or a little bit more peace of mind might be another way to state that. And I think that we always have to be cognizant of where that peace of mind comes from. It comes from all of you, it comes from me. There's no doubt about that. But there are many good reasons for the county to maintain more robust reserves than our minimal requirement, at least in my view. And we don't have to look farther back than the last recession a few years ago to understand how important those reserves are for the county to be able to maintain an adequate level of service without affecting significant layoffs. I was proud that our county was able to weather the recession better than every other county in the state due to thoughtful financial planning in the years leading up to that. So, that's why that peace of mind is important to me. And with that, if there are no other comments, then I would like to move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5.06 to restore the 0.5% sales tax rate.
I'll second it. I have a couple of comments. First of all, Bill, you campaigned against a tax increase of any kind, and I respect that, and you won, and the voters were behind you in that decision. And you should be commended. You stood up during your campaign, said, "I will not raise taxes." The voters elected you by a recisive margin, and that was a mandate you were given. And a year later, Mark, you stood up, first time in Crown County's history that I can remember, that the county commissioner openly said, "I will restore the sales tax cut." And you won with a wide margin, and I applaud you for that. That took courage, it took guts, it took intestinal fortitude to stand up and say, "I think that decision was wrong, and I will rescind that," and a wide majority of the voters supported you. Okay, I voted for a tax cut. Today, I'm supporting the increase. The beautiful thing is that the voters will render that decision in the fall, because I'm very confident that whoever runs for county commissioner in the fall, that this will be, much like the last two campaigns, one of the deciding issues. And so, it will be in the hands of the voter, and that's fair. But these two gentlemen who I work with, they both campaigned on these issues, and they both won with the same majority. So, how... Mark has a mandate. It's clear he would raise the 0.02%. Bill was clear he wouldn't raise taxes, and he has a mandate. I'm changing my mind, because I think it's the right thing to do, but I'm confident that this fall, the voters will render the deciding mandate on which direction, because we're not talking about a new tax increase. We're going to be talking for future commissioner races about the restoration of a sales tax that's been collected in this county for decades or a reduction, and it will be the voters who will choose the candidate to break this stalemate. Today, on behalf of the organization, on behalf of the leadership team, on behalf of people who do have some concerns with the budget, I'm willing to change my mind. But I'm also willing to expect that the voters will render these two competing ideas this fall. And I'm confident we'll have a multitude of county commissioner candidates who will be debating this issue, and once and for all, will know which way the public wants to go. I have to applaud both these gentlemen. I give both of you tremendous credit. Very difficult to run for office and say you're never going to ask for any revenue, and yet you want to balance the budget, provide all the services that the folks on the West End. You, for four years, pledged never to raise revenue, but you also pledged to keep services to the West End. And that's going to be a challenge, and you did pledge to bring back revenue and continue to add services. So, is that a winner or a loser today? The voters... I suspect there's lots of people, I know people that voted for both of you. So, I don't think there's an ironclad, "This is a Solomon moment." This is a... Hey, what is the right answer? I don't know. I don't know which way the voters want to go on this one. I looked at both of you. You both had worthy campaign candidates, you both had worthy opponents. Both of your opponents were well-qualified. One was an incumbent, one was a sitting city council member. Both of your opponents had tremendous experience, and in the case of both of you with diametrically opposed issues, you both won. So, what's the right answer? I don't know. I know that for today, I'm willing to do what I think is the right thing for the organization, because I believe that our leadership team expressed some concerns at a leadership team meeting, and I'm going to respect those concerns that were listed. I'm going to respect the Ross Tylers of the world, Sheriff Benedict's, Ross Pini, Attorney's Office, people who have talked to me, the other elected officials, I'm not just calling you guys out, but Ross and the sheriff were pretty vocal. I respect Stan Greasy's work, who says, "Look, you've got a problem. Looking ahead, it's not just this year. Stan's looking two, three, four, five years." He's warning the board that a $2 million ongoing structural deficit without will cause major concerns. He's warning the board, and I better respect that. But it's not about... I get it, I mean, it's about me because I'm the deciding vote today, but it's not about me. It's about the public, who was elected. Two gentlemen with diametrically opposed positions on this issue. I sure hope this doesn't change the way the board's working, well, I think it would distract you here. I don't think it will. I don't think the two of you want to have this be a divide, but I cannot know for certain on which way the public wants to go on this. So, the only thing I can think of is to say, let it be debated this fall. Let campaigns and candidates come forward this fall and argue and debate and campaign, and let's let have individuals campaign on further tax cuts, and let's have individuals campaign on the current tax rate that we have, and let the voters... In essence, they'll have to break the tie. Thus far, I don't know. You're feeling strong, you were honest, and you were honest. But you're wrong. But for me, today, as a commissioner in his 16th year, I'm going to respect the leadership team on this decision. I realize that... Why is realized? That breaks a promise that was made, but it's the right thing to do, because it's respecting the leadership team, and it's respecting of Stan's work as he looks forward. No matter who the commissioners are down the road, make no bones about it, $3 million of reserves this year, projected to spend $2 million of reserves next year, projected to spend $2 million of reserves the year after to maintain services that we have today. By my sixth-grade math, it's $3, $5, $7 million. You're going to end this year, we have 12 under the statutory limit. Decisions will have to be made, cuts will have to be made. If you live within the current tax structure, taxes will have to be increased. That's just the facts, and the voters will decide. If you cut taxes, you have to be prepared to cut services, and if you don't cut taxes, you have to be prepared... If you don't cut services, you have to be prepared to raise your revenue. It's a simple law. So, I apologize that I'm disciplining some people. It is the right thing to do for me, and I'm confident that the voters will render a decision this fall to break a difficult stalemate between the two of you. I encourage the two of you to begin to move and look for areas of compromise and agreement. The two of you will face structural and difficult budget decisions. Do not let this decision draw a wedge between the two of you. I appreciate it, listening to viewpoints that the two of you are bringing and think we're having a respectful dialogue. I think that you are listening to one another, but the two of you have tremendous decisions to make in the future with regards to either revenue or service cuts. Make no... This is a pretty full room. Just a question, if you put a service cut on the table, this room will be overflowing. Just project and just say, "You know, we're going to close county parks," and see what the... Or say, "We're going to negotiate..." Cut 4H. I proposed cutting 4H one year. This room was overflowing, and llamas were in front of the corners. So, that was a small budget cut, a $120,000 budget cut that I proposed, and this room was overflowing, and I got spit on by a llama from the other side. Thus, raising taxes. Not... Nobody likes to do it, nobody wants to do it, and in fact, most tax cuts that... Most tax increases that other counties take, this county hasn't even discussed for years. People talked about whether we should raise the 0.03% blind justice tax. We're not even talking about that. There are other taxes that the state doesn't take. In my issue, whether we proposed it to the ballot in November as a standalone issue, which we could do for an advisory, or whether we just sit back and say the next round of commissioner candidates will decide this, either way, the voters are going to decide. And I'm actually really comfortable with that process, that the voters will decide, because the voters elected the two of you, so we'll have to wait and see. I encourage anybody running for office in the future that this become an important issue. I encourage that you guys begin to work together to build a plan for the future, and that's probably what needed to say. I'll support Mark's motion today, because I have to support one of you. So, no disrespect to you, Bill. The voters decide in the fall. So, it's moved and seconded. Any other comments the board members want to make? It's moved and seconded. Accept the opposed ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Two to one. Thank you all for being here. I wish you all... Again, please, gentlemen, if it becomes a great issue for the board, if you have any other important issues, you can do that. Thank you.
Sure. Flow resets until 11:45.
I present the Constitution to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
Mr. President, Commissioner Ozias.
Here.
Administrator Jones.
I'm here. Commissioner Peach is attending the Board of Natural Resources, and hopefully he's recovering as well. It's time to do double duty. Request for modifications to the agenda?
I have nothing. I did contact Commissioner Peach as you asked me yesterday to make sure he was comfortable with leaving Item 1D on the consent agenda, and he said yes, more than comfortable. He wants to follow the recommendation of the county's here.
And for the record, on the weeks when Commissioner Peach is gone, we're asking him to pull any items that he would like to be present for or to participate in. So, if you'll find the first Tuesday of the month, we're going to try to stick with issues that have already been discussed, and he's already had a chance to participate. So, this item was added, so we had the administrator contact Commissioner Peach and make sure he was comfortable, and it sounds like he's okay with it.
Yes.
Approval of the agenda?
I move to approve this agenda.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comments? Any member of the public who should make comment on agenda items? Unlike last week, I get them easy. Single one? Consent agenda.
Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of January 25. Item 1B is approval table for the period ending January 15. Item 1C is approval of workers' compensation expenditures for the month of December. And Item 1D is the Washington State Association of Counties' amicus QRA brief for Washington County's Risk Pool versus Heart Bank.
I move to approve Items 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D on the consent agenda.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports and presentations. Commissioner Ozias?
I have no reports or presentations this week.
I don't have any?
No, nothing for me.
Did Bill have any one to add?
No, other than he appreciates everybody's concerns, and yesterday was a really tough day for him. Flu was... It was feeling better by last evening.
And he understood all of those last...
Yes, he did.
...delayed making decisions on the last...
And he was thankful. He said, "I really appreciate the new attitude of the board with that," and he says, "It's great practice." Granted.
Contracts and agreements.
Item 2A is Amendment Number 1 with the Washington State Department of Social Services, Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery, and this is just a language modification, no change in the budget.
I move to approve Amendment 1 with the Washington State Department of Social Services, Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Work session is... All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2B is an agreement with Peninsula Behavioral Health for psychiatric counseling and case management services to unfunded clients, maximum amount $23,365, and these were monies out of the CD Mental Health Program Fund.
I move to approve the agreement with Peninsula Behavioral Health for psychiatric counseling and case management services to unfunded clients.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Again, these were work session back on the 21st of December, but we also had a... Didn't we do a follow-up because of Commissioner Ozias? Ida needs as well?
We did a brief group...
In January, we touched base with one more time.
Yes, we handed out the entire group of...
So, it's moved and seconded. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2C is agreement with Peninsula Behavioral Health for behavioral health services to juveniles involved in the justice system, maximum amount $77,863. Comes out of the budget under the CD Mental Health Program.
I move to approve this contract with Peninsula Behavioral Health to provide services to juveniles involved in the justice system for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2016, for a maximum amount of $77,863.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Again, work session a couple of times. Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2D is an agreement with Volunteers in Medicine of the Olympics for behavioral health services to adult unfunded patients, maximum amount $14,800. Again, the same grouping, the money comes from the budget out of the CD Mental Health Program Fund.
Move to approve this contract with Volunteers in Medicine of the Olympics to provide behavioral health services to adult unfunded patients for calendar year 2016 for a maximum amount of $14,800.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Again, work session a couple of times. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2E is an agreement with Olympic Personal Growth Center for substance abuse treatment services to adult unfunded clients, maximum amount $55,000. And again, the same grouping out of the CD Mental Health Program Fund budget.
Move to approve this $55,000 contract with Olympic Personal Growth to provide substance abuse treatment services to adult unfunded clients for calendar 2016.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Again, work session a couple of times. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2F is an agreement with Parish Parish Barti LLC to purchase easement for the Carlsberg Sewer System, maximum or total cost $1,000, all as was discussed on work session January 25.
I move to approve this agreement with Parish Parish Barti to purchase easement for the Carlsberg Sewer System.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2G is an agreement with the City of Port Angeles for maintenance, repair, and operation of storm drainage facilities for the Crown County Courthouse, all as was discussed in work session on January 25. No change to the budget, as this was all part of the courthouse storm ID retrofit project.
I move to approve the maintenance and operation agreement with the City of Port Angeles for the courthouse LID project.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Again, I'll just add, for the record, Items 2A through 2G, work session a number of times. Commissioner Peach was in those work sessions. Commissioner Peach had the ability to pull in any of those items, should he would wish to discuss them further, so that's why we have so much on today's agenda. He's looked at this and has not indicated that he has any disagreement with any of these items, so...
In fact, he told me he agreed with all of them last night.
Thank you.
So, do you move motion in a second for the agreement with the City of Port Angeles, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Administration.
Item 3A is resolution canceling uncollectible personal property taxes for RCW 84.56.240, all as was discussed yesterday in work session.
I move to approve the resolution canceling uncollectible personal property taxes.
It's moved and seconded, so in this case, Commissioner Peach was not here yesterday, but there's a time-sensitive nature from the request from the treasurer, so I hope that you at least alerted him of this.
I did.
I don't see how we can hold off until he shows up, so in this case, he doesn't have a chance to weigh in, that this is directly a result of the treasurer's report and the work that she has completed, so I don't really see any options.
No, it is ministerial function according to the treasurer by RCW, and he agreed that that is her duty, right?
It's moved and seconded, all in favor? Can I make a caution? Just for those of you who haven't looked at this list online, if you do, you'll notice that it's extremely short this year, and that means that the treasurer's office has been working very hard to collect, to collect back unpaid taxes, so my, congratulations to your team for doing such excellent work in this regard.
I concur with those remarks. I think if someone were to pull the public record, you would find in many years that this list exceeds the number of five that are on this year, so by, by the name of too much greater. My memory may be wrong, but I suspect that it's been much longer over the years, and just, you guys are good, are much better. She's done a great job, doesn't mean anyone did a good job before, it's a kind of back handed compliment, actually, if I hadn't have been thinking about it, but you did a great job. Thank you. All in favor of the legislation?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item 3B is resolution appointing a member to the Trustlands Advisory Committee, namely, Councilmember Michael Meredith is appointed as the City of Port Angeles representative.
I move to appoint Michael Meredith as the City of Port Angeles's representative on the Trustlands Advisory Committee.
It's moved and seconded, could you give a chance to talk to Commissioner Peach about this?
I didn't.
Again, it's stuff on that City of Port Angeles's representatives, that we really have nothing to do but to accept that. It is his, he's in charge of overseeing that committee.
He didn't bring that one up, right?
I think we're about the okay, if he has an objection, he can raise it, we can reconsider it, but he has to probably work with the city and get reconsideration. This is exactly what was brought to us a couple of weeks ago, where a council member led them, said that the city council hadn't talked about this, now it appears that they have gone through the process, so.
I, yeah, no, I think so too, it appears to me that they've gone through the process, which we asked them to do, and come up with a different recommendation, so I see no reason why we should not accept it.
It's moved and seconded, accept the City of Port Angeles's appointment to the Trustlands Advisory Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. No bids, no words, no budget, no community development, no public works, no public carings, public comments, any member of the public who wishes to make general comment before the board?
Yesterday morning before the meeting, I was confronted in the Safeway parking lot by a, you know, person wondering if I had slid in previously, was spouting profanities, was aggressive in his interaction with me, and I had to de-associate that situation and walk away, but I would tell everybody to be vigilant, I've seen activities in the Safeway parking lot over the years that have been needing attention, but this is the first time I've been in front in my lifetime in a city like this, so.
Anybody else have a comment? If not, review the calendar, nothing on the calendar for the rest of this week, where the board will be participating, so there's no objection, we'll continue this week's meeting next Monday morning at 9:00 AM. There's no objection, so we're.